Town Meeting Tonight. Town Meeting Tonight. Should we ignore racial differences? Town Meeting Tonight. Town Meeting Tonight. Oh. Oh.
America's Town Meeting is on the air, and the doors of Historic Town Hall in New York City are open to the nation through NBC's Great Blue Network. We are happy as always to welcome George V. Denny Jr., the President of Town Hall and Director of this program, Mr. Denny.
Good evening, neighbors. Our subject this evening, as originally announced, was in full: Should Democracy Deny or Disregard Racial Differences? The simple title "Should We Ignore Racial Differences?" will serve our purpose this evening, as we are a democracy and as the people believe in facing facts as we find them on the basis of scientific observation. In presenting two outstanding scientists, Dr. Ernest A. Houghton, Professor of Anthropology at Harvard University, and Dr. M. F. Ashley Montague, Professor of Anatomy at Hanneman Medical College, Philadelphia, we are giving you the benefit of the observations of two of the most eminent authorities in this field. It's our custom to check our prejudices outside of the doors of Town Hall and to use our reason in these meetings. We are ever aware of the banging banner hanging here on the stage which stresses these words: tolerance, reason, justice. America's Town Meeting of the Air, dedicated to the advancement of an honestly informed public opinion. Following the speeches, we will hear questions from an audience of sixteen hundred people here who have just been participating in a very interesting preliminary meeting conducted by Dr. Curtly Mather, also of Harvard University, and Head of the Adult Education Center in Boston. Dr. Mather will keep following the two addresses. I take pleasure at this time in presenting Dr. M. F. Ashley Montague, Professor of Anatomy at Hanneman Medical College, Philadelphia. Dr. Ashley Montague.
Mr. Denny, ladies and gentlemen. In Italy, I once heard a definition of democracy charmingly delivered by a little Italian sailor. He said that democracy is what people have in America, where everyone has the liberty. That is about as good a description of American democracy as any I have heard. But for our purposes this evening, let us understand by democracy the form of government in which the supreme power is lodged in the hands of the people. By race, let us understand a group of human beings possessing a community of physical characters which serve to distinguish them from other groups of mankind. Now, if we agree that democracy is the form of government which prevails in the United States, and that among its bid citizens, who are members of different racial groups, it is a just and proper inquiry, in the interests of us all, to ask whether there are any physical or mental qualities peculiar to any of these racial groups which our social order needs to consider in the government of this country. Having made the task of finding an answer to this question, part of my life work, I can answer unequivocally that democracy should disregard racial differences. Of course, there are racial differences. How else could one speak of races? But these differences can be disregarded because they are superficial and have no connection with behavior or with society. Now, what are racial differences? These are popularly considered to be of two kinds: physical and mental. According to the popular conception of race, it is supposed that there exist different groups of mankind who are each believed to possess inborn physical, temperamental, psychological, and intellectual traits. Such imputed group or race differences are further supposed to be reflected in differences in national outlook, culture, social behavior, and so on. This conception is quite incorrect. We can demonstrate the physical differences, and we can observe those of culture and behavior. But the one thing that we cannot do is to prove or demonstrate that the differences of behavior and culture have anything to do with innate or inherited qualities. Certainly, there appear to be differences in temperament, intellectual attitudes, and cultural behavior between races. But there is no reason to believe that these differences are inborn. For the most part, they seem to be due to differences in cultural conditions, different social backgrounds, and differences in economic conditions. The acquired nature of these differences is proven by the fact that where, as in America, these differences have been given a chance to merge into a fairly uniform character, there has emerged a typical American temperament or psychology, contrasting sharply with the British, French, German, and Italian psychology or temperament. Traveling Americans are easily spotted in Europe, no matter whether their names be Jones, Cohen, McDonald, Julius Caesar Washington, Agitato, or Endin Ski, off, in, or out, and no matter where their immediate ancestors may originally have come from. As for the physical differences which exist between races, these are substantially the products of adaptation to different biological conditions, such as those of inbreeding, geographical isolation, and environmental factors such as sunlight. Factors akin to those which are at this moment producing local types in America. Such physical differences cannot intelligently be discussed in terms of physical or cultural superiority to one another. There are no superior or inferior groups by birth. If there are any environmental differences associated with the physical differences which distinguish races, then science has been unable to discover them. Physical differences are purely external and are only superficially associated with cultural differences existing or imputed. Yet these external differences provide a convenient peg upon which to hang all sorts of imagined internal differences: moral, intellectual, mental, and emotional. In this way, physical differences become the basis for social discrimination and the creation of social inequalities. But science is aware of no such association between external and internal characters, except, of course, such as are socially produced. Europe, the Europe we all escaped, whether we came on the Mayflower or on a cattle boat, shows us today where we end up if we think that the shape of the nose or the color of the skin has anything to do with human values and culture. Such differences of behavior and character as seem to exist between racial groups are due principally to the inequalities in the opportunities for social and economic betterment which have been afforded them, not to unalterable innate or hereditary differences. No racial group has a monopoly of good or bad hereditary qualities. The existence of any race at the present time is proof of a fact that it possesses a majority of desirable characters; otherwise that race could not have survived. Give every race an equal social opportunity, and that is what democracy is supposed to do, and the only differences between minds that one will find are such as now exist between individuals of the same race who have enjoyed equal cultural opportunities. Every human being, whatever his racial affiliation, differs from every other in his makeup and has had a somewhat different inheritance and different opportunities. What a dull world this would be if we were all poured to the same mold. The important differences are not differences between racial averages, but between individuals. And it is because of the existence of individual differences which have little or nothing to do with race that a true democracy should disregard racial differences and pay every attention to individual differences. Yes, democracy must recognize differences, the differences between individuals, not as race members, but as individual citizens. Individuals differing in countless ways and capable of making individualized contributions of all sorts to our culture. Hence, democracy must disregard racial differences and concern itself with the task of affording every individual, regardless of racial origin, adequate opportunities for self-development, so that the best that every individual has it within him to give shall be given, both for his own happiness and that of his fellows. Let us be human beings first and put race where it belongs into the textbook. Every political system is capable of some improvement, and our democracy is no exception. We stand to profit immediately by giving up acting on racial mythology, the racial mythology which lurks in the minds of most of us and contributes so much to social friction. But what we cannot change the conditions of social friction merely by changing our minds. As members of thinking humanity, we should study these things to keep them from adding to social friction, to realize that we have been and are being snobbed, and that there will be a price to pay if we go on being snobbed. Now that travel in Europe is no longer feasible, we could profitably explore such questions right here, and perhaps find out something for ourselves which would prevent us from committing the ghastly errors of our misguided European relations. The greater part of the world's unhappiness is caused by people who make decisions concerning those whose nature they neither understand nor attempt to understand. Let that never be said of us. The flaring of blatant racial enmities in times of economic stress is an association of events which has never been more painfully evident than it is today. In Germany, we have witnessed the imposition of a mythological racial dogma upon a whole people, a dogma which deprives all those who are not mythical Aryans of their civil rights and of the right to earn a living. All over the world, under conditions of economic stress, race prejudice becomes a powerful weapon with which one may boycott another group or individual economically and socially and feel perfectly righteous in the process of doing so. Physical and cultural differences are seized upon and made the basis for racial antagonism and discrimination. Trivial things such as differences in manners, polish, social background, religious beliefs, and so on, which under the proper conditions should be pointed interest and value, become the basis of distrust. Just as a child runs to its mother and the familiar when in difficulties, so most of us run to our own group when we feel insecure and fancy that anyone not of our own group is the bogeyman and the cause of all our troubles. In a democracy, there should be no place for such childish conduct, nor for the conditions which give rise to it: improper education and economic insecurity. Where, in a democracy, all men of whatever racial affiliation were granted equal social and economic opportunities, the question "Should democracy deny or disregard racial differences?" could not be asked, since the social and economic forces which create race antagonism would not under a true democracy exist, and there would then be no race problem, or else the concept of race would be understood for what it is worth, and the question would be meaningless. Every individual would then clearly understand what he should but does not understand today: that he is the result of the mixing of many races, that he is a much-mixed alloy with all the added strengths and qualities which the alloy possesses as compared with the unalloyed metal. It is a fundamental tenet of democracy that it must balance the interests of all its component groups and citizens. There is nothing in the nature of any of these groups which we have called races which gives them less weight in the balance of democracy. If then we ask the question "Should democracy deny or disregard racial differences?", the answer is: Definitely, democracy should disregard the superficial physical differences by which races are related, because they are of no significance, and should emphatically deny that any other differences exist which call for any inequalities in the treatment of its citizens.
Now, this is a case where doctors disagree, and our second speaker is Doctor and Professor Ernest A. Houghton, the Professor, Head of the Anthropology Department of Harvard University. Dr. Houghton.
Ladies and gentlemen, the child of doubtful fatherhood is unlikely to esteem the study of family tree, and the founding will hardly exaggerate the influence of heredity. For similar reasons, many of us are sensitive about race and inclined to deny its importance. Each of us prefers to regard his virtues as peculiarly organic and to blame his vices upon environmental misfortune. Some who belong unmistakably to physical races which are despised and oppressed keep race as the source of social injustice. Others who have suffered persecution or social disadvantage because of language, nationality, or religion are eager to disprove the racial basis of such affiliation. For a person can change his nationality, religion, or language, and thus escape such oppressions. But he cannot change his race because it is his physical inheritance. Finally, many of us abhor the idea of racial differences because we observe that those who show excessive pride of race have commonly little else of which they can be proud, and usually make race the excuse for shameful behavior. So we prefer to have faith in environment and to deny race, just as we prefer to believe in a benevolent deity and to discredit the devil. The unregenerate of my youth used to emerge from Sunday school chanting "Cheer up, boys! There ain't no hell!" This is the philosophy of anti-racialism. But the darkness of racial misunderstanding cannot be lit by a whistling solo of whatever shrillness and cheer. We may whistle up our courage by denying race, but there is in fact no sweet oblivious antidote wherewith to cleanse the stuffed wisdom of that perilous stuff which weighs upon the heart. The compound question of this evening may be split into three elemental queries: Are racial differences real or imaginary? Secondly, if real, should they be denied or disregarded in a democracy? Third, if imaginary, should they be denied or disregarded in a democracy? I shall answer these questions in the order named. The anatomical features by which we distinguish race are real insofar as they can be observed and measured. It is easy for any layman correctly to assign most individuals to their classification in the three main physical groups of living man: Negroid, White, and Mongoloid. The combinations of physical features by which such distinctions are made seem to be in the main hereditary. That the members of a group of Negroids are more closely related to each other than to individuals of a Mongoloid group could hardly be questioned. But when we attempt to subdivide one of the primary physical groups of mankind, for example the so-called White, into distinct races, we encounter serious difficulties. For although races have developed within this group by variation, inbreeding, and selection, they have subsequently mingled and have swapped their racial characteristics back and forth. Again, radically diverse physical groups such as White and Negro usually live under dissimilar environmental conditions, even in the same country, thus it is always possible that apparent racial differences in pathology, physiology, and psychology are influenced by these environmental inequalities. Psychologists, in any event, are unable as yet to measure effectively mental and emotional characteristics. When they have found differences between races, their conclusions have been rendered dubious by defects of technique, by complicating environmental factors, and by their failure to study racially homogeneous groups. Thus, there is no conclusive proof that racial differences in psychology and in behavior actually exist. The answer to my first question is nobody knows. Yet it is unscientific to claim that racial differences do not in fact exist merely because they have not been proved and because it is expedient to deny them. Ignorance can validate neither negation nor affirmation. My second question is: If racial differences are real, should they be denied or disregarded in a democracy? We assume here, purely for the sake of argument, that racial differences in pathology, in psychology, and in behavior may in reality exist and are capable of scientific determination. Such differences might be presumed to be of the following nature: Each race would have its own special abilities and disabilities. One race might thrive physically and be most successful economically under certain conditions of climate, geography, and food supply. It might have specific disease immunities and other grave susceptibilities. It might be better fitted for rural agricultural pursuits or for urban industrial occupations. It might be gifted in art, science, and mechanics, but relatively incapable in politics, business administration, and warfare. It might be in the mass emotionally unstable or phlegmatic, imaginative, or the reverse. Should such possible differences be denied or disregarded? On the contrary, I think they should be studied and exploited so that each racial element could be taught to realize its fullest possibilities of success by capitalizing its strength, and to avoid certain endeavors which through its peculiar weaknesses lead to failure. We may be sure of that no race has a monopoly of virtues or vices, and that there are no hierarchies of mankind by total racial ability, ranging from something a little lower than the angels to something a little higher than the apes. Nature apparently gives a square deal, albeit an old deal, in the assignment of low and high cards to her various breeds. But if that proves not to be the case, we ought to face the truth and to work in the light of it. Therefore, I think that scientific organizations should be formed with ample resources for the study of racial differences to the end of shaping social policies if and when such racial differences have been indubitably established. Then, for example, if it were ascertained that the Negro has transcendent gifts in music, it should be the national policy to encourage Negroes to enter this field and to afford them special opportunities. And if Nordics are really especially good at war, they ought to be preferentially conscripted. I would not hamper individual initiative, irrespective of racial ability or disability, nor establish any racially limited or prohibited areas, occupations, or social activities. But vocational guidance might profit races as well as individuals. I do not resent the predominance of Irish-Americans among our police because they seem to be fitted by constitution, by temperament, and by inclination for such service. I should be content to have our municipalities governed by Irish-Americans, not a race but a special ethnic blend, if it could be demonstrated, as possibly it may be, that these make the most honest, wise, and capable administrators. So I answer that if racial differences of a non-anatomical nature are real, they should not be denied nor disregarded in a democracy. But if these racial differences are not real but imaginary, should they be denied or disregarded? Again, I uphold the negative. Of course, the principle of racial equality, as well as that of individual equality, is supposed to have been built into our constitution and to be operative in our government and our society. Yet we must admit that in the real workings of American life, this is all sham and hypocrisy. A man in the street, or even in the house of lawmakers, cares little for humanitarian policy and does not attempt to inhibit racial prejudice when it suits his selfish interests. A scientist may doubt the existence of racial differences in psychology and behavior. The humanitarian and sentimentalist may deny them. But the ordinary high-grade moron of our citizenry believes firmly in differentiated racial behavior and acts upon that belief. He rushes in while anthropologists fear to tread, trampling all over the field while they sit timorously on fence. Committees on Democracy and Intellectual Freedom may shout themselves hoarse in the denial of racial differences. Some citizens of the deep south still believe that only an occasional lynching or live combustion of the Negro will preserve the virginity of white females. They put this belief into practice. Certain Western whites still adhere to the motto that there is no good Indian but a dead Indian, and continue to rob the Aboriginal owner of our continent. Our edifice of racial equality is a sepulchre, whitened without but full of festering corruption. It smells to high heaven and is an offense in the nostrils of all honest men. We have a government bureau of American ethnology, restricted however to the study of dry bones, ruined dwellings, dying languages, and dead customs of the American India. Harmless but relatively futile pursuits. The control and exploitation of the living Indians have long been in the hands of the Indian Bureau, until recently the most noisome nest of political patronage which even our democracy harbors. Under the present administration, a belated but conscious effort has been made to give the Indian a new deal, which however is as little to his taste as is the more generalized new deal to that of any republica. Why don't we not have a powerful, non-political, honest government organization devoted to the study, protection, and improvement of our oppressed Negro minority? Another for our large population of Mexican origin? And still others for various underprivileged racial and national elements which live in this land of freedom and equality without experiencing either? In Europe, we have ample evidence of the folly of building artificial states out of racially and ethnically heterogeneous populations, under the theory that a democratic government will transform them into unified societies with no ruptures due to cultural, linguistic, and racial diversity with their resulting prejudices. We have done a little better here because our nation is grown by accretions of voluntary immigrants, with a notable exception of the Negro. We could do a great deal better still if in our government an effective Department of Race and Culture would bend its efforts to the scientific development of every racial and national stock in our country, and to the task of coordinating the efforts of each to further its own happiness and the advance of American civilization. We must combat existing inequalities of racial opportunity and virulent racial prejudices, neither by futile denial nor by lofty disregard of realities, but by actual work upon the problem. However, I cannot advocate such measures without declaring most emphatically that this entire matter of racial differences in our democracy, real or imaginary, together with the problem of the dangerous growth of racial prejudice, is trivial in comparison with the need of arresting human degeneration in individuals and groups irrespective of race, nationality, and economic status. If we can rid ourselves of feeble-minded, the insane, the incurably diseased, the criminalistic, and the non-productive members of each race and nationality in our democracy, the remainder, however diverse in racial and national origins, will work out its own salvation. Race prejudice will die of inanition, and we shall have done with transplanted boons and silly swastikas, with the savage mumbo-jumbo of the Ku Klux Klan, with red ideologies and with pink idiots. We might even hope for a release from the Daughters of the American Revolution.
Continuing our program, I'm going to ask the conductor of our preliminary meeting, Dr. Curtly Mather, to speak, commenting on both speeches made by the principal speakers and on what the audience said beforehand in the preliminary meeting if he cares to. Dr. Curtly Mather.
Ladies and gentlemen, this has been an extremely interesting demonstration of how two gentlemen can come from wholly different points of view into a room and there discover that they are the best of friends and the closest of companions, and then come out together arm in arm. You'll observe that although Dr. Ashley Montague and Dr. Houghton disagree quite definitely upon one very fundamental factor, if not fact, in this whole question, they reach in conclusion practically the same position. And yet... And yet there is, even in the conclusion, I think, one slight difference. Dr. Hooton emphasizes the necessity for developing the best possible individuals in each of the many races or subdivisions of races on the theory that there may be certain abilities possessed uniquely by certain of the races. He goes on to say, and there he gives the okay to Dr. Ashley Montague, that no race has a monopoly on all that's good or on all that's bad. And I'm quite sure that anybody whose life has not been too much conditioned by an emotional environment involving frequent repetition of slogans and fluting of symbols, if not parading hither and yon, going there and back again frequently, without ever arriving anywhere, anyone who has not been thus conditioned, I'm quite sure would agree with our two very learned scientists, that each race or subdivision of a race has something which is of great value to the human family as a whole. Dr. Ashley Montague would suggest that the racial differences are quite superficial, have no real meaning, and that therefore we should expect to find individuals in any race capable of doing anything which we might ask them to do. Whereas Dr. Hooton would suggest that the differences may perhaps be real, and therefore in any race we might find some individuals who could do something better than the individuals in any other race could do them. Personally, I'm inclined to agree with Dr. Hooton here, not because his office is very close to mine, you know, they keep both of us in the museum at Harvard, but because that seems to me to be the conclusion that I would draw from what facts are available for my own study. But is it not fine, ladies and gentlemen, to have two such careful, critical students of one of our most important objects of study, human beings, reach conclusions that are so conducive to the progress of democracy as a form of organization? And surely, as we broaden the horizon of our sympathetic understanding of other people, as we make more and more closer and more frequent contacts with those whose physical features and characteristics are somewhat different from our own, we come at last, I think, to recognize their intrinsic worth, their inherent value, and thus we may learn to cooperate, not merely to have coordinated activity, but actually to have cooperative activity, as indeed do the members of an orchestra. Some of you in the preliminary meeting raised that question, and I think it is very well worthy of continued careful consideration. As we look towards the future of mankind, is it better to plan for an amalgamation of all the races, something which, of course, is going on, so it continues to the ultimate extreme, when there will be no longer any observable differences between the inhabitants of any country anywhere? Or should we look forward to the future as though we were going to organize the orchestra with as many members, each having his own peculiar and very valuable contribution to make to the sum total of the whole picture? I'm inclined to think that, at least for a little while, we will get along better if we expect differences to continue, if we do not try to fit everybody to the same procrustian bed, to level down or level up, but recognize the differences and respect the differences. After all, the only sure cure for race prejudice is the development of respect for the person whose history, whose schooling, whose language, whose religion, whose antecedents, whose environment are different from our own. And if we can develop that respect, seeking to find the valuable in each person regardless of his racial antecedents, then and then only will democracy become successful. Because after all, democracy succeeds only as the average citizen in his everyday life looks with eyes of sympathetic understanding upon all his fellows round about him, and is ready to share, is ready to cooperate, and thus bring to every man the liberty which he covets for himself. That's what makes democracy succeed. And so I would echo the statement of these two very learned scientists, that for practical purposes, we should ignore racial differences except insofar as we discover that the differences are differences worthy of our respect and that there are different values in the members of the different groups. Towards such an end, I think we're making progress.
Thank you, Dr. Curtley Mather. Now we are ready for the questions. Will you please rise and state the name of the person to whom your question is directed? Start with the balcony, yes? Dr. Hooton.
May I ask, if you were the head of a government bureau which would exploit race for the benefit of democracy, how would you deal with the problem of the half-caste?
That's my problem, Dr. Hooton. If you were the head of a government bureau, how would you deal with the problem of the half-caste?
I would attempt to distinguish the particular social abilities and physical differences which mark off the half-caste from the pure of either race, and I should, having made a determination of such findings, attempt to develop the abilities and to bolster up the points of weaknesses if they prove to exist.
Thank you. Now just one question, first, okay?
If, as...
Dr. Hooton.
Dr. Hooton.
If the procedure which was suggested by Dr. Montague were carried out, and if every individual were given the maximum opportunity to develop himself, and if it were then true that there were any racial differences in abilities, would they not appear and reach their best attainment by that procedure without any other procedure whatever? Would it be necessary in that case to calculate in advance for racial differences since all individuals would find their best potentialities by that method?
If you think that you can eradicate racial prejudices by the mere statement that there are no racial differences, if in some way, by some pious and possibly true statement of this kind, you can do away with racial prejudices, certainly individual abilities would manifest themselves, quite irrespective of racial difference, without any need of entering into the question of race. But it is my opinion that this matter of racial prejudice, however unreal, however arbitrary, however wrong it may be, can never be eliminated and done with merely by making ex cathedra statements of the sort that scientists often make, that there is no such thing as a racial difference.
Thank you. Let me take a question off to Dr. Ashley Montague. Who has a question for him? The gentleman there in the balcony?
I wanted to ask this question earlier in the evening. It's been partly covered by the last statement of the chairman. I'll repeat it in part of repetition, however, I would like to ask Dr. Montague what is, to my mind, the vital phase of the question. If we ignore racial differences altogether, it would lead to general intermarriage and consequent miscegenation, and that, of course, spells degeneracy. Therefore, would it not be better for each racial group to remain pure but all learn to live together harmoniously, recognizing differences fairly but respecting such differences?
With all due respect to the questioner, may I say that he's already answered that question himself. The answer is nonsense.
If we all plead that intense nationalism is the principal cause of war, that all nationalism is an idolatrous religion, then would not the disintegration of economic nationalism be the solution of the racial problem?
Wouldn't the disintegration of nationalism be the solution of the race problem? Nationalism is based upon language, government, environmental considerations, history, and tradition, and it is very difficult for me to conceive of the disintegration of nationalism as it is really a much more real and vital thing in our everyday life than race, which some people say is an anthropological abstraction.
Dr. Hooton, stick by me here, this man with this question.
A moment ago, Dr. Hooton said the pure of a race. May we have that defined?
The pure of a race?
You said that you would choose out the pure of a race.
I don't think that I made quite that statement. I said that in case of a mixed group, I should attempt to distinguish the characteristics which mark them off from the theoretically racially pure from which they were derived, as for example, whites on the one hand and Negro on the other. But I agree with the speaker that racial purity is an ideal and not a reality, and it's not even a desirable ideal. And I should like to say in regard to the question which wasn't asked to me but which my colleague Ashley Montague answered somewhat abruptly, that, in my opinion, and I think in the opinion of all physical anthropologists who've studied the subject, hybrid groups arising from the crosses of different races are not inferior to either the parent stocks, but frequently, in some respects at any rate, superior to them.
If possible, I would like to direct my question to both of the gentlemen.
You may say.
Can race prejudice be eliminated through education?
Can race prejudice be eliminated through education?
Well, the answer to that question is, of course, that it all depends upon the kind of education. If you calculate for a kind of education which is intended to eliminate race prejudice, the probabilities are that you can implant into the ideas of the majority of mankind notions similar to those which one inculcates in the minds of the young, which enable them to read and write correctly in their own language. Thus, one can educate individuals to learn to value other people for the qualities which they should always be valued, and not for those physical characters which are made the pegs to hang values which have no real association with. The answer is, of course, by education, under the proper circumstances, you can eliminate racial prejudice, since racial prejudice is generated by factors of a similar nature.
And that's it. The news on that question. My able and learned friend has commented upon it to my entire satisfaction. I would merely add that I do not think that education, which consists in mere denials and pious platitudes about democracy, will ever in itself eliminate racial prejudice. We must study the races, we must disprove, in a way that's never been done, the existence of racial inferiorities. We can eliminate racial prejudice not by passing it by with a haughty stare, but by going to the mat with the subject, studying the whole subject, and getting to the truth and the bottom of the matter.
Not that we can learn a great deal in an hour's discussion, but I'd just like to ask this audience here, we are indulging in education in the field of race, do you think that this kind of meeting helps to eradicate race prejudice? Hold up your hand. Hold up your hand, will you? Yes, yes. Well, I just want to tell the radio audience that you all seem to feel that way. All right, now the man in the aisle.
Dr. Hooton, please.
Dr. Hooton.
Dr. Hooton, democracy implies equality of man. If, as you suggest, we foster the development of inequality among races, if there are any, will that be conducive to the continuance of our democracy?
Democracy implies the equality of man. If the implication is that all men are born equal in regard to their natural endowments, I think democracy is mistaken. If it implies rather that equality of opportunity, at a full measure of opportunity, that should be granted to each individual to realize insofar as in him lies, now that, I think, is true democracy, and I approve of that. Of course.
What's that?
Dr. Hooton.
Dr. Hooton.
Clearly, you made the statement that the American Committee on Democracy and Intellectual Freedom may cry itself hoarse. Our morons will stick to their racial prejudices. Don't you think that if such organizations as the American Committee were to weed the great mass of American humanity that lie between the anthropologists and the morons, would weed them out of their traditional prejudices, that we'd have little to fear by the pink moronic devils?
The gentleman wants to know if you can't bring yourself to find a good word to say about this American Committee.
I have the greatest respect for the opinions and ideals of the American Committee on Democracy and Intellectual Freedom. I fear, however, that they have pitched their sermons a little too high. We have to deal not only with highly educated, broad-minded liberal people, such as I take all of you to be, but also people who are not so socially minded, who are not as intelligent, who give full sway to their prejudices. And I do not think that these vandiloquent statements and these possibly hard scientific facts are going to get down to the levels where prejudice is rampant and where racial strife manifests itself on account of those prejudices. I just think we've got to go down and protect the races that are oppressed and help develop them. We've got to take actual measures in their favor and not simply stand in the pulpit and say, "Brothers, you must all be good because we're all equal," and everybody goes out then and tries to hang something on the next man.
Dr. Hooton, Dr. Montague.
Well, let's start with Dr. Montague.
Does racial prejudice exist in the Soviet Union?
I think we'd better stick to America, if you don't mind. Is your question for Dr. Montague?
I would like both of the doctors to answer.
All right, Dr. Montague.
Now, it seems to me that we have been talking quite a bit about an obvious fact which apparently all of us agree on, that is, there is racialism, there is antagonism in the world between people. We have seen what happened in Germany, and Czechoslovakia, Austria, and all those places. The point is, as a Negro, I should like to know when our own democracy in America is threatened, because traveling throughout the country, I have witnessed a barrage of anti-Negro propaganda, of anti-Jewish propaganda, stickers posted in trains caricaturing the Jew, the Negro, and others. This is a threat to American democracy. What are we going to do about it? That is the question that faces us today, and it seems to me...
All right, we've got that question.
So what, in my opinion, can we do about it more than just have academic talks?
What can we do about the propaganda in the field that stirs up race prejudice?
You will remember that my opening sentence in my address here this evening began with a definition that I heard given by an Italian sailor who said, among other things, of American democracy... American democracy, that it afforded every citizen living under it in America the opportunity to take the liberty. And of course, everyone has the liberty to express his opinion and to stick up stickers anywhere he wishes, if he is unseen, and to put on those stickers practically anything he likes. Now, let those people go on doing that sort of thing. There are certain gentlemen who broadcast over the air from certain pulpits, who make certain statements which they're perfectly free to make. I think the very best thing that we can do is to permit them to continue to make the sort of statements they make. In that way, a very large majority of people are able to judge for themselves the worth of such opinions. As for what we can do about it, besides academic things, on the other hand, it is not besides academic things, it is through academic things that we can do these things. Through our schools, we can teach our children the things they ought to know about one another, about the peoples of this earth. Instead of giving them the empty, arid facts of geography in the way in which they are usually given, let us give them the facts about the peoples of the earth in simple language so that they may understand. It is by education through our schools and to our children that we can achieve the greatest amount of good for mutual understanding amongst the peoples, not only of this country, but of all the world.
Doctor Houghton, will you comment on that same question, please?
I should go a little bit further than Doctor Ashley Montague, in the matter of combating racial prejudice and in aiding the oppressed racial and ethnic minorities. I am a little impatient with a government that has enormous resources, inexhaustible resources, to spend upon war, agriculture, commerce, and a great many things of that sort that have to do with economics, and has practically no interest in these different groups of nationalities within its own country. I see, of course, I approve of the Department of Public Health, but it seems to me that a little less attention to the economic resources, a little less attention to the gadgets and the things that produce income, and a little more attention to all of these various groups in the country, and very definitely something done in a governmental way for the protection of development, particularly of the negro and of other groups, it seems to me is called for.
I'd like to read this telegram before we get too far, from a town meeting of Seattle, Washington. Its time, Mrs. O. F. Lamson, moderator of the Women Jews University Club, the Town Meeting of Seattle. Will you kindly have Professor Houghton answer over the air the following question? What are the physical and social characteristics responsible for the different degrees of racial prejudice against Mexicans, Filipinos, Mexicans, Filipinos, and Japanese? That's a large order.
I assume that the racial prejudice against Mexicans, Filipinos, and Japanese is assumed-- is named in the ascending order. I don't know. That is, that there is least prejudice against Mexicans, somewhat more against Filipinos, and somewhat more against Japanese. Well, on the biological side, the people that are least unlike from us are likely to arouse the least prejudice, and the Mexicans are Southern Europeans with some dash of Indian blood and are closest to us. The Filipinos and the Japanese of Malay and mixed Mongoloid stock are further away from us. And I think the reason why the Japanese suffer more from racial prejudice in this country than Filipinos is because the Japanese are much more able, economic, and political competitors. And the basis of a great deal of racial prejudice is not skin color or biological characteristic, but the fear that some other race will get the better of you in business, make a better living, and cut the ground out from under your feet.
Doctor Ashley Montague wants to ask Doctor Houghton a question.
Doctor Houghton has stated in answer to the question from Seattle, that we generally dislike those who look most like ourselves, least. I should like to ask him whether he can account for the behavior of the German government, who alike the Japanese so much and the Jews so little.
These speakers are going to get us over across the water anyhow. All right, go ahead.
Ladies and gentlemen, I am not sufficiently on mission to account for anything the German government does.
Now, Mr. Montague--
Doctor Ashley Montague.
An emphasis in the previous question raised concerning the fear of interracial marriages, and the fact that it is known that the United States is one country that has one of the largest mixed populations brought about by the very men who advocate this fear, isn't it true that throughout the South, the three million mulattoes are products of children and grandchildren of the very men who make laws in this country against interracial marriage?
That statement is perfectly correct, and as Professor Houghton correctly pointed out, intermarriages between groups of individuals or individuals belonging to different groups are generally very healthy as far as the resulting offspring are concerned. The differences that one generally sees between the offspring of, say, white and black marriages and the offspring between the marriages of blacks between themselves or whites between themselves are not due to biological factors at all, but to the social discriminatory factors that come into play and produce these differences.
Thank you very much, Doctor Ashley Montague. I wish there were time for more questions. There are about fifteen or twenty people on the floor with their hands up, but we've got to turn our program over to our listeners. But before we do, I want to extend our special greeting to the Pacific Coast Conference on Adult Education, which is meeting this afternoon in Berkeley, California, with this program as a part of their local program. I understand from our Town Hall Advisory Service that this practice is growing throughout the country, and if this is true, we can continue to use the radio for such purposes as this. We need to have no fear for democracy in America. Now, Mr. Cross, will you tell us the title of next week's program?
The title of next week's program is the title of our essay contest, What Does American Democracy Mean to Me?
And the speakers?
Seven representative Americans. The Honorable H. Jerry Voorhees, United States Congressman from California; Pietro Di Donato, author of Christ in Concrete; Alice Solomon, German refugee, sociologist, and author; Doctor E. McNeil Portit, pastor of the Euclid Avenue Baptist Church of Cleveland, Ohio; Mary MacLeod Biffu, Director Negro Division, National Youth Administration; Jack McMichael, Chairman of American Youth Congress; and W. Seldon Washington, great, great, great-grandnephew of George Washington.
And let me take this opportunity to announce the program of the following week, which will be on the subject, What Kind of Peace Can Europe Make? The speakers will be John Gunther, Maurice Hindis, Linda Littlejohn, and, who is here in the audience tonight, Professor Ahoggin. Now, what about copies of tonight's program?
The complete transcription of tonight's program is published in Town Meeting, a bulletin printed by the Columbia University Press, which may be obtained at a nominal charge of ten cents, or if you would like the entire series of twenty-six broadcasts, they may be subscribed for now and received weekly at a cost of two dollars and fifty cents. If you want copies of these bulletins, or if you're interested in organizing a town meeting discussion group in your community, address the Town Hall, 123 West Forty-third Street, New York City, 123 West Forty-third Street, New York City. May I also remind you that the closing date of the essay contest is December 4. Information about the contest may be secured from Town Hall, 123 West Forty-third Street, New York City.
What Does American Democracy Mean to Me? America's Town Meeting of the Air is a public service feature and a Blue Network presentation of the National Broadcasting Company.